And they're diluting your resources by half for the people who are actually homegrown, people that are in your own community. Many homeless individuals move to Washington with the belief that they will financially prosper in the home state of Amazon, Microsoft, and Boeing. Yet when they arrive, they learn they don't have the necessary skills to obtain the position or are unable to perform the job due to addiction issues. Others come to our state because of numerous taxpayer-facing programs such as King County's thorough housing initiative where homeless individuals are given free housing units that cost each of the taxpayers more than $330,000 to purchase. It's worth noting that three-quarters of the homeless population admitted they have an addiction problem. The website makes it very difficult for a struggling addict to find treatment help. The only mention of addiction assistance is not on the website's main community resource page. Oddly, you must click through many contacts just to be able to find a Washington recovery hotline. So in closing, Dr. Morgen advocates the following strategy. Prioritize funding of effective treatment programs. Create paths for those with long-term ties to the region and reunite them with their family. Support long-term recovery by supporting programs that train homeless individuals to receive meaningful employment. Help those who accept treatment and enforce public safety laws on those who refuse. We all know how many people accepted help several years ago when we had to clear a group of parks. What was that? That was a big goose egg. Zero. We had individuals come up here and tell us how much it was going to cost us in law enforcement, in jail, and all this stuff to clean out the park. How many people were taken? Zero. How many people were arrested? Zero. So there was opossums. Actually, once we actually start enforcing the ordinances and the laws that are out there, it's amazing. I would like to do a public records request right now on the ETS truck. Where are the permits and the additional use permits for that vehicle to be parked where it's at? Plus, it needs to be moved. Sidewalks need to be cleared. It's an ADA violation. I had to call in twice this weekend. Seven days ago, I sent an email to Mark, Chief Costner, I believe, and every single one of you guys. How many people responded? Big goose egg. Zero. So this is your time. Where's our time? No interaction and no town hall meeting.
Thank you.
When is that going to happen?
Our next speaker is Shannon Garbridge. Well, City Council, my name is Shannon Garbridge, and I'm currently offended to be on the City Council. As I've been going through some paperwork for endorsements and just telling people who I am and collectively gathering all the way.
Just relax a little bit, Shane, and you can't talk about the election at all.
But anyways, so I was putting all my stuff together, right? I was remembering that in 2023, I was a part of, I don't know if you guys know, the Washington Recovery Alliance. They're an amazing group, and they're an amazing group of people who have been substance abuse, mental health, go down with help, hope, and recovery, and come together to make bills pass, like House Bill 2319 and SB 23, which I worked on with. And we got $150 million per year for the state of Washington to help with recovery housing, recovery campaigns, to help the people that needed the most. Fast forward two years later, and we're here, and we're having problems at Port Park. I'm just not understanding. Where are the money banks? I'm not here to be upset, and if I sound like I'm upset, I'm not mad, I'm just curious. I'm just wanting to hear some clarification to where this money went, because this money wouldn't need to rely on our community to pay for that. Because people like me went and testified. I don't know if you guys have ever been to legislation and know what that is. You know, I'm captain, the district captain for the legislation economy. We're in our district. And so what that means is that I think everybody who wants to testify together, whether that's on a Zoom phone call, whether that's on just a regular telephone, whether we go meet them person, you meet them wherever they are so that that way you can compile their stories, right? Because our story is seen so much, right? We need to compile that, and we use the correct words, and we become the kindest and love in our hearts. We can move mountains, right? And so it's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff, those incidents, right? My part was these things. You know, I had lost, I love you emotionally, but it's very near to my heart. I lost my brother, my baby brother was dismembered, and it broke my heart and it broke into my heart. And so when I went to go before the Washington Recovery Alliance to fix these issues, I wanted to bring home my hometown, the place where I live, where my kids are, where my grandbabies live, to make it better. But these funds weren't taken. I wish that I knew. Thank you so much. I can't have a baby.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dave Mortensen.
All right, thank you for speaking here. One thing I'd like to say, even though I'm kind of pushing, is invested in a better audio, visual. I've been aware of the condition, but I followed your meetings. It's really hard to hear anybody that doesn't speed up, and the video quality is really quite poor. So you have to make sure my land around. Thank you for the positive movement on Port Parks. But there's more to this because I go down there every day, we just came right before the meeting. There's people doing open language and grubs down there. There's a lady that was actually stripping my fallen clothes as we went by. So I think it needs to be pursued and, you know, constantly pressure to clean that out. The other thing I really want to talk about, about eight weeks ago, I gave you guys a handout that we went out and actually cataloged every homeless camp of the Sholmiata along the railroad tracks. That was, I think, better than eight weeks ago, and yet not a city, single city council member has talked to me about this personally. This has been eight weeks ago. Now, come on. You know, we know that there's a huge problem out there, but, you know, we're trying to use our country to help you do your job, but you gotta meet us halfway. All right. Thank you.
I'll probably have to see them.
Thank you. All right. We have a presentation, a proclamation tonight, Peoples First. We can help them with what the terrorists is going to read that.
This is a proclamation designated in July 2025 as Americans with Disabilities Month. Whereas, the city of Shelton recognizes the need to celebrate the success of the Americans with Disabilities Act for individuals in Shelton and Mason County. And whereas, the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990, to ensure civil rights in our community, of our community members with disabilities. And whereas, we recognize that individuals with disabilities are people first and deserve to be recognized as active members of our communities. And whereas, all people have the right to speak up and speak out. And whereas all people have the right to speak up and speak out for themselves. Whether we use our voices, assistive technology, sign language, or body movements. And that what we say needs to be valued and respected in all aspects of our lives. And whereas all people have the right to make decisions that affect and direct their lives. Through equal access to information, resources, facts, and support. And assistance from significant people in our lives in a self-directed process to form decisions. And whereas inclusion means that everyone is valued, respected, and included in their communities. In ways that are meaningful to them and that we each have a role to play to make inclusion of people with disabilities a priority. And a reality in our community. And whereas people with disabilities have the right to employment that complement their abilities. And that provides a living wage, opportunities for advancement, and personal fulfillment. And whereas people with disabilities deserve equal opportunities to utilize public transportation. For work, medical needs, education, recreation, family and community needs. And that transportation helps to make and keep us independent. And whereas we believe that no person should be segregated from their communities. And that appropriate funding to support enhancing community services must be provided. Now, therefore, the Shelton City Council does hereby proclaim July twenty twenty five as Americans with Disabilities Month in the city of Shelton. And urges all community members, elected leaders, medical providers, educators, and businesses. To support people with disabilities in our community in their efforts to live safe, healthy, happy, and productive lives.
Thank you, council member. Now we have a resolution for well one pump replacement design. Assistant Public Work Director Aaron Nixon's details for us.
Mayor, council, thank you. Aaron Nixon, Assistant Public Works Director, I'm very forward to your budgeted item this year regarding to our well one project. Just quick updates that well one project, the pressurization project is almost done. We will have the new pouring buildings in. Um, those are so that we can actually treat water at those wells. This particular one again was a budgeted item in this year's budget as part of upgrades to the facilities that we have. A pump within well number one was placed in nineteen eighty nine. It's time to replace that particular piece. In addition, we plan to put what they call BFTs, which are variable frequency drives. What they do is they keep the pump from going on and off continuously. Yeah, give the aim, start even stopping them, waste a lot of energy. What these variable frequency drives is that basically what they do is they basically change the voltage that goes into the pump. And ramps it very slowly up and down. They gain a constant pressure. A lot of utilities use these. Uh, it's a good technology. What, what it means is that our pumps are going to last even longer and we will have not have to take the hours off and rewind them. So with that, I have the four-year resolution. What we'd like to do is we have great offspring for consultant engineers in water. We would like to enter a contract with them in this one quarter. Um, again, it was the amount for the entire project was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This design works about seventy. In addition, once that's done, the rest of the money will pay for the replacement of the pump as well as the installation. So we're hoping, um, this is a business item. I'll bring this back to you again. Um, but, uh, we're hoping that you, uh, they, um, move this to the next week. Yes, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to place resolution number one, three, nine, zero, dash, zero, six, two, five to the July fifteenth, twenty twenty five action agenda for further consideration.
All right. Comment to the question, the council. We have a motion to second to place resolution number one, three, nine, zero, dash, zero, six, two, five on the July fifteenth, twenty twenty five action agenda for the consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close. That motion carries. All right. The only action item is revolution from some joint city-county paving projects. Aaron has more information.
But, uh, council. Um, back in June, um, recall, council passed an interloper agreement with Mason County, um, to basically share services with them. It works very well for us in that, um, it's cheaper. Uh, it's a lot easier in the sense that if we utilize town personnel and state personnel. We can work through procurement issues, those kinds of things. So based on that contract that was approved in January, uh, we are preparing and planning to begin paving work. There's a map in your pocket that identifies the overlay areas that are identified, things like that. Based on how we budgeted this, the price for the asphalt from this project, our threshold is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, above that, that won't get any formal procurement stuff. But, um, we're, we're hoping, um, based on the council allows to receive this, again, our intention is to pay on the fifteenth, sixteenth of this month. We're going to be sending out door hangers on July seventh. We're also going to put out our message board to just kind of let people know about this, not the area that this work is going to happen. We understand that it's, it's gonna cause delays. We have bypasses in place to repeat its state around. Our desire is, and we would like to bypass the free touch rule, unidentified in here. And allow us to enter into that contract, uh, with the county to get that work done.
Thank you, Aaron. Don, anyone else have a public comment? Uh, really quick. Mark just not got a free touch on here. Does that matter?
Okay.
No. Okay. Um, we have reading of resolution number one, three, nine, one, dash, zero, six, two, five.
Resolution number one, three, nine, one, dash, zero, six, two, five. A resolution in the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, updating the public works department. Utilize the existing inner local agreement of Mason County and joint city-county courses to complete the twenty twenty five West Mountain D paving project.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one, three, nine, one, dash, zero, six, two, five as presented.
All right. Comments or questions?
I want to thank Aaron again for all your work at Public Works, especially with our roads, our regor condition index. And also with the quantity and quality of our water, as in the previous, um, resolution. And pass on, uh, my, my thanks to your crew and to everyone who works in the department to keeping our city running and for the water that we have. Thanks so much.
All right. Sorry, quickly, I should have mentioned this really important thing, especially with the T V D. Or folks, this money is going to, this project is being fully funded by the resources we get from the transportation benefit. So just letting you know that, um, it helps us for sure.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you for working and Mark, the city manager, for negotiating, uh, getting this work done with the county this year. Um, working with the county partners is always saving us a lot of money. This is about a four hundred thousand dollar savings.
Yeah, pretty close. Yeah.
So thank you, guys. All right. We have a motion to second to adopt resolution number one, three, nine, one, dash, zero, six, two, five as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Thank you, Aaron. Mark, I know you've been busy all week. City manager report.
All week?
Well, the last day.
Last few weeks. Um, yeah, I, I want to reiterate the important, uh, relationship we have with Mason County and being able to get this, this work done. Um, we really are stretching those dollars, those transportation benefit dollars as much as we can. Not only with the funds, grant funds that we're matching, but to get local roads paved and improved. Those grant funds aren't available, so it's really important to have funding mechanisms there and to have almost a mile paved, uh, this summer up on, on West Mountain is really important. The crews are up there, um, digging out some of the failures, repaving those, so we're not laying new asphalt over some of the, the weaker spots. The raising iron, if you will, so some of the manholes and things like that, and then they'll go back through. And they'll put gravel down on the shoulders that, that, you know, eliminate that lip when the new pavement goes down. So really grateful to our crews and the skill that they have in, in order to get us, uh, to the place that we are today with, uh, with some of these street projects. Um, with the impending Fourth of July holiday this Friday, I want to remind everybody in the public that, um, fireworks are still banned in the city of Shelton and have been for some time. Uh, we've got a couple of message boards up, uh, reminding folks of that. Um, if there is a, uh. A lot of times people ask how, um, they can notify the city. The best way is through the non-emergency line at, at Macecom four, two, six, four, 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 one. It's not an immediate emergency unless somebody is hurt, there's a fire or something like that, and that's the best way to contact them. They're really busy on the Fourth of July. There's a lot of injuries and things like that that happen, so not, not utilizing the nine-one-one, uh, system. Will help them out and they designate that. Uh, next week, uh, we not only have Movies in the Park starting on Friday, but, uh, Shelton Rotaries, um. Or excuse me, Schukum Rotaries, yeah. Music in the Park series starts on Thursday as well, so starting those, that, the kind of back-to-back entertainment series at Nealon Park on Thursday and Friday nights. So we're looking forward to that. And with the council's approval, uh, I would propose that, uh, we cancel next week's study session. Um, we're just compiling, um, more information for a more robust study session, uh, later in the month. So if, uh, if you don't mind, I'd propose that we cancel that July eighth study session and I'll see you again on the fifteenth.
I don't mind a day off. That's, that's.
Any other question?
No, I hope so. No.
Thanks so much.
Does council have any new items left tonight?
I'd like to reiterate that Live Forest is a big party, but remember we do have veterans with PTSD. We do have animals that are very much affected by the explosions and the vibrations of fireworks. And that it is illegal within city limits, so please not inside city limits.
It's been really hot. You can have a little bit of a breeze. So when we're lighting up fire, our, that range of, uh, fire to our community. And I just was just love to not worry about that this season. I don't want to worry about going anywhere, talk to them about, uh, worry about you all too much. So, um, the, the fireworks, I know they're fun, but if we can not do that, it's a silly question.
Right. So it looks like we cancel our study session for the eighth on the fifteenth. So far, we have a financial report. We have no business. That's the time our public, I mean, that change maybe. And our action item would be the grain on well one, uh, we talked about tonight. So with all that, our meeting is adjourned at six thirty-four P M.
Can I say one more thing? I want to acknowledge some of your.
Well, we're, we're, you can do whatever you want. Yeah.
It's not recorded anymore. No.